No, Mr. Hinckley, no, Mr. Spiegelberg?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Nope, seeing and Chairman Moore, myself, none. So, no disclosures. The discussion today will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, the rules of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask the individuals who address the commission to please identify themselves and state their address. And with that being said, we'll go ahead and move on to public applications. The, we got a pretty short meeting here today. But the first application is Vista Beam Hornsby Road Tower Application, L U C T dash zero four dash two zero. Joe or David, who's going to present this?
Me.
It looks like.
All right.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Applicant is Invenive Wireless, doing business as Vista Beam, located in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 20, Township 15 North, and Range 74 West. The request is for a tower permit. Current zoning is agricultural. Current use is residential, and there is existing access of a Hornsby Road. There were five reviewed. Nobody had any concerns. Notice has been provided by posted sign publication and certified mailing as required. The proposed tower shall not adversely affect the public interest. The applicant has provided the required site plans. And the applicant has addressed all potential impacts. The applicant is proposing a 127-foot tower for a communications company. The tower will meet the setbacks for both property lines and lease lines. Findings effect, the findings necessary for approval as listed in this report are incorporated here in its findings effect. The property is currently zoned agricultural. The applicant has provided a complete application. The applicant has submitted a statement allowing Albany County to install a communication antenna on the tower if needed. The applicant has submitted a letter of intent to review of the tower if abandoned. Documentation has been provided that ensures the density standard levels are not exceeded. The application has provided a copy of the construction plan certified by an engineer license in Wyoming. The foundation design must be submitted and approved by the county engineer prior to construction. Conclusions of law. The provisions of the Albany County zoning resolution, Chapter 5, Section 5, and Chapter 5, Section 9 have been met. Staff analysis, the applicant has provided a complete application and has addressed all potential impacts. And Albany County standards for tower permitting. The applicant will need to follow all further Albany County construction requirements as they proceed. Staff recommendation is to approve the Vista Beam Hornsby Road Tower Permit Application, L U C T oh four two zero, based upon and incorporating the findings effect and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have any questions from the commission for Joe on this application? Okay, Mr. Spiegelberg, go ahead.
I have this statement here at the top of page three. The applicant is proposing 127-foot tower for communications company. The tower will meet the setbacks for both property lines and lease lines. That's fine. Is there any, is there any condition where the tower, if it fails and goes over, would strike any roadway? We've gotten into this several times and, and what they've come up with is to make the tower collapsible, the art of it collapsible, so the remaining part of the tower does not go over and fall on a roadway. I don't know if there's a roadway or not. I looked at the photo here. I can't, I can't discern if there's a road in that danger zone and if that tower does fail or not. That's my only question.
Okay. Did you hear, Mr. Spiegelberg?
Yeah. Yes. There's not a road that it would fall on.
Good. Thank you. That was my only concern.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Mr. Hinckley, I saw you had your hand up. Any questions for staff?
Yes. I just wondered if that raised hand featured your work? Or you, Chairman Moore?
Mr. Hinckley, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if everybody is. Maybe your mic's a little low.
Okay. I'm not sure where my mic even is. How's this?
I'll go tell you if it's not, but go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, I guess I have a first, a general question for Joe or maybe David. As I was looking at the building regulation, I think towers are towers. How is it that we have wind towers differently regulated than communications towers? But I just wondered if you could tell me differences, similarities, why there isn't? Why don't we just call a tower a tower?
So, our tower regulations are geared mostly towards telecommunications. And we're, basically, the risk or the nuisance or the impact of telecommunications towers is going to be, you know, falling on, you know, whatever danger there is of them to fall and get on somebody else's property. So, basically, we regulate those by the setbacks. And they're specifically for that. Wind farms are different. I mean, you've got a bunch of different things we're looking at. So, you know, I guess with telecommunications towers, there's some other issues, maybe, you know, with birds or animals or whatever. But a wind farm is, is huge. I mean, you're looking at thousands and thousands of acres. They've got the spinning blades. There's noises associated with the blades. And so, so it just is appropriate to, you know, split those out because there's different impacts with those different types of towers. I mean, yes, the wind turbines are a tower, but there's, there's a number of other issues that are associated with them that aren't associated with the telecommunications tower.
But a tower with a turbine on the top of it does not have to get a tower permit. It's all covered under either a small or a large wind?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I guess that the, so that a tower with a wind turbine on top of it gets regulated, it doesn't have to get a separate tower permit in addition to all of its other wind regulations?
Right. Yeah, correct.
One of the things that caught my eye, for example, it was in the wind, in the tower regs, it specifically says, "We don't want the towers to negatively impact the visuals of the landscape." I thought that was interesting, that that language isn't. That's almost stronger than in the, than the wind regulations.
Yeah, and the wind regs, we actually stayed in the findings that, you know, we know these things are going to be visible and you're going to see them, so.
I just, it wouldn't taste, one was kind of more restricted than the other. All right, so just beyond that background, specific questions on this one. Joe, do we understand there were no adverse public comments? You didn't mention, but it's clear. Nobody, nobody had any problems?
No, there was not.
And then towards the end of it, we had a long piece from the county engineer, and then the red was interlaid with the dark. Have those all been resolved? It wasn't quite clear on what I was seeing.
Yes. Yes, everything's been resolved.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Ms. Hanning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. We're getting accustomed to seeing Vista Beam's applications at this point. And it seems like the people out there who are going to benefit from the tower feel like the improved Wi-Fi is more beneficial than the impact of the, of the tower in their, in their sight view. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Kennedy?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And myself, one of my questions was answered by Mr. Hinckley. He asked the same thing I was going to ask about if everything was corrected, and it sounds like it is. So, I don't have any questions at this time. I'll go ahead and give the applicant an opportunity to speak, address the commission if they'd like to for this application.
I'm Andrew Wicker with Vista Beam. I don't think I have anything to add or any questions. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. We're getting kind of accustomed to see you. See you. Well, very good. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was going to say, I'm happy to be on the, on the front of the agenda.
I bet you are. If we have any questions, we'll certainly direct them to you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll go ahead and open up this application to the public. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this application, over on the right side of your Zoom screen, there's a participant list. And if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. And what I'll do is I'll go ahead and call on you and give you an opportunity to speak publicly on this. Not seeing any hands up. I think that it'd be appropriate to go ahead and close this to, to the public. Any discussion from the commission?
Ms. Chairman, I would move recommendation of approval of the Vista Beam Hornsby Road Tower Application, L U C T dash zero four dash two zero, the Board of County Commissioners.
We've got a motion for Mr. Kennedy. Do we have a second?
I would show a second.
A second for Mr. Spiegelberg. Any discussion with motions on the table? Mr. Hinckley, go right ahead.
Yeah, just first, a general comment. I agree with what you said, Chairman Moore. I think communication towers, that is, that is one of the real forward-looking things that we can do. And I think that the economic future of Wyoming is going to be well, well served by increasing the good increased communication and particularly the ability of people to work remotely. So, yeah, I'm, I'm conceptually all for this kind of thing. Then I have just one quick question directed to Mr. Spiegelberg. Several times, we've heard you mention the concern with roads, and I'm just curious, has that been a problem? Have we had towers falling over crossroads? Just a question to those of you that have been doing this for a long time. Where does that concern come from?
Yes, and I did find a photo finally that you could tell there's no roads that would be in the radius if it did fall. The main, the main concern is, is we had one up by Boslar that got away from us a few years ago. And they erected it and so forth and so on. And when you drive down that road today, you can see if that does fail, it'll come right down on the highway. And so, from that point on, the engineers came up with a solution, and I guess an extra safety factor. They engineered the tower that if they got a terrific wind stress line of the upper 15 and 20 feet would fail first and save the rest of the tower. So, that's, that's where the concern has come from. And ever since then, no one has tried to get around that. They've all been very compliant.
Yeah. Mr. Hinckley, did you hear, Mr. Spiegelberg?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just to clarify, it was, it's probably been about three or four years ago, right, Mr. Spiegelberg? And when we started seeing these pop up more, and with Mr. Spiegelberg driving to Rock River, he took one and thought it was a concern. And he addressed it at that meeting. And, and I think that we went through a real thorough discussion on what their wind loads and then also to how they collapse. Instead of collapsing over, they collapse within. And, and I know that that's always been, since they put that one up, just a big concern for Mr. Spiegelberg. Is that correct?
It just kind of got set aside. It's still standing.
Yeah.
And it's still, it still makes me uncomfortable every time I look at it. Because if it does go over in one.
Yeah.
It will strike the highway.
Yeah. And I think that that's for public safety.
Maybe the other saving grace is that that happens if you would have a terrific wind originating from the east. But thank goodness, most of the wind comes from the west. But that's no guarantee either.
Yeah.
But they, that engineer at the time assured us, oh, they've got plenty of guidelines. They got this, they got that. But that did not, still, I'm still not comfortable to this day with that situation.
Sure, sure. Mr. Hinckley, go right ahead. I know you're, I didn't mean to interrupt. I apologize.
No, no, I can't hear it on Zoom. Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelberg. So, then maybe the question goes back to David. This, there is a setback in the tower regs that's one for one. If I read that correctly, is that right? And is that relative to roads or property lines? Just remind us of what the setback requirements are for these towers.
Yeah, so it's one point, one or one, one to one. Yeah, so one, for every foot of tower, there's a foot of setback. So, 100% of the tower height, basically, from a property line, so the base to the property line. Now, there is a process that if you can get an engineer to certify that through the design of the tower, that it will be less than that, then they, then we can grant a variance from that one-to-one setback. And that's what's been done with a few projects. And I think, you know, Mr. Spiegelberg's kind of talked about that as the different designs, they're designing to kind of collapse on themselves, or if they don't, you know, they will, will just fall straight over like a tree, you know? You're cutting down, but, so, yeah, and that's, so that's, that's basically the requirement, one-to-one unless the professional engineer will sign off on the design that's less than mine, so.
Is it road typically a property line or is that a nuance, this road?
Well, see, that's, that's, that can be a little bit, you know, different. So, in the county, even county roads, some of them are easements the county roads are on, and some of them are actually dedicated or, you know, public property. You know, for instance, yeah, I'm not sure, maybe Two Rivers Road, I think there's some spots like that. Sections are, you know, different. So, some sections are easements and some sections are the actual right-of-way given to the public. But so, if, if it's an easement, there's a possibility that the proper line goes to the middle of the road. So, you're not getting a one-to-one setback necessarily from the road. So, so, yeah.
And that was my concern, and it sounds like we put that on the list, which is a million on course, that we could address through a slight regulation change. That's certainly sympathetic to Commissioner Spiegelberg's concern. And we can engineer things to beat the band, but what would be most comfortable is if the thing did go over like a tree, it wouldn't be a problem.
Right.
That would be appropriate at some point to modify that regulation to save property lines or public, public roads that rights it with. I hate to take up Mr. Wicker's time, but I hope there's going to be a lot more of these, so maybe we can fine-tune our regulations to go along.
Yep, sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Any more discussion? Ms. Hanning? None from you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Spiegelberg, any more discussion?
None.
None? None from Mr. Kennedy. We'll go ahead and take a vote. Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
Mr. Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Chairman Moore, myself, aye, motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Wicker. You'll move on to the Board of County Commissioners. And hopefully, we see you in the future again.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. At this point, that ends, that wraps up our public applications for this meeting. We're going to move on to item number eight, which is current planning projects. What we have, I have an individual that wants to just introduce themselves about the Rock Creek Wind Project. And I believe that that's Mr. Marston. Is that correct?
That is correct. Hello, Commissioner Moore. I am, I am here and ready to begin the introduction.
Well, very good, Mr. Marston. Go right ahead. We'll sit here and listen to you and give us the rundown of what you're wanting to discuss with us.
Great. And I actually do have one technical question, Mr. Gerch. Is it possible to have the presentation put up? Or should I share my screen on, on my end over here?
Let, let me see if I can get it up. Just one second, okay?
Great, thanks.
Does that work?
Yep, I can, I can see that.
Okay, that's not at the right spot.
Yeah. Great, yeah, better start at the beginning. Wonderful. Well, hello, commissioners, and, and thank you all for taking the time today to learn about Rock Creek. My name is Chase Marston. I am Invenergy's the developer on this project. I am joined today also by my colleague on the development team, Kelsey Strobel, who is, who is on the call as well. Before I get in a little further, I'm getting a little bit of feedback. Am I the only one who is getting that?
I'm not getting a hold of it.
Great. The moment, the moment I addressed it, it disappeared, so hopefully it won't come back. So, my goal for this meeting is just to officially introduce myself and our project to you all. I'd like to share some details.
It's frozen, debate.
Okay, I think you're back, Chase. Got frozen.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Feedback and freezing. So, did, did I get, did anyone hear any of that?
Nope.
Great, well, I'm, my goal today is to introduce the project by sharing the details and the current statuses. And I will look forward to working with you all throughout this process. And, yeah, and if, if you didn't hear the beginning, also, I wanted to let you know that my colleague is on the phone as well, Kelsey Strobel. So, there are two of us here today. Great. So, on to slide three. Perfect. Before jumping into Rock Creek, I wanted to give you a little bit of information about Invenergy. We are the country's largest privately-held renewable developer. We have over 100 wind projects, 40 solar projects, and a growing portfolio of transmission projects around the world. Over the past 20 years of developing energy, we have become really good at what we do and have learned from a lot of successes and a lot of mistakes along the way. And we can go on to the next slide. As we do have projects around the country and around the world, we have always highlighted the importance of the communities that we work in, and we work to ensure that we do make a positive impact wherever we go. With Rock Creek, Rock Creek Wind, we look forward to spending more time in Albany County and bringing in some tax revenue, permanent jobs, and local land payments with us. As shown on the slide here, Invenergy has directly or indirectly invested over $200 million into local communities in 2019. We've hired hundreds of US veterans, and we have given back to impactful local organizations in the communities that we're investing in. And you can go to the next slide, Mr. Gerch. Thank you very much. A really good example of some of the work that we've done is right next door in, in Carbon County. The Rock Creek Wind Project actually does straddle the, the county line there, so we will be continuing our work in Carbon County. But back in 2018, we finished development on two projects, Ecola Flats and TB Flats, and have since sold those projects to Rocky Mountain Power. And you can go up there and see the turbine spinning and the project working and, and the energy is going onto the grid. So, we consider that a great success. We were putting 700 megawatts of clean energy onto the grid, and, and we've hired over 30 local operations and maintenance jobs and invested over $65 million in, in projected tax over the project's lifetime to Carbon County. And in our mind, Rock Creek Wind will pick up where Ecola Flats and TB Flats left off. We will bring some more power, clean power to the, to the area, some more tax revenue to the area. And in this case, luckily for Albany, we will have the majority of the project in Albany County. And wonderful, down to seven, yeah. So, as for location, the project is probably in an area you're all familiar with. It is up off of sort of in between Highway 80 and Highway 13, in between Arlington and Rock River. And this slide here shows that it is technically two projects. We are viewing this as one, Rock Creek one and Rock Creek two technically, but we view it as Rock Creek. The reason we have two separate projects is because we have two different points where we will be putting power onto the grid. One, we will be taking it all the way up into pretty far into Carbon County, up past Medicine Bow. The other one will be a little closer. That's up at the Foot Creek Substation. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Foot Creek Wind Project right off of the highway. It's, the substation is right in that area as well. It's about 25 miles from Laramie. And actually, the next slide works as well. It's kind of the same map. 25 miles from Laramie, a little bit more from, from, from Rollins. And it's, you can't see on the map here, but one of the reasons that we are really excited about the project location for Rock Creek is actually to Commissioner Hinckley's earlier point, we do recognize that wind turbines are going to be very visible. There's no way around that. And in our effort to cite the project in a responsible manner, we have selected and are really excited about the site because it's nestled within three existing wind projects. We have High Plains just to the north, McFadden Ridge, also just a little to the north, and then Foot Creek off to the west. So, as you're driving along the highway, it will look visually continuous, albeit a much larger visual continuity project. But it's, that's one of the reasons we're really excited about it. We think that the visual impact will be, will be relatively lessened. Perfect, thank you. As you could see on the previous maps, the generation tie lines, they are going to be broken down into two parts. One will be a long 40-mile genti line all the way up to Aeola Substation. That is the one just northwest of Medicine Bow. We are, we're working on that one as well as the shorter one, the 5.4-ish really mile genti over to Foot Creek Substation. And we are in the process of having a third-party do a corridor analysis for our route so that we can try to cite that transmission line in both directions in the most responsible, least impactful way possible. And we haven't gotten the reports back yet, but we're close to finalizing those. And for the majority of the route, it looks like we will be able to be following existing right-of-ways, whether it be transmission lines or, or training tracks or roads, where we're going to be able to minimize our impact on those pretty effectively. So, they will be quite long, but hopefully, very few impacts. And next slide. So, for our project timeline, actually, I think it was on the previous slide that I didn't mention it, but our, our goal for this project is to have commercial operation date by the end of 2024. And what that means, working backwards, is that we will probably begin construction in the spring of 2023 and have two construction seasons. And then, working back a little bit, we hope to have all of our permitting and our, and our surveying and our research done in, in 2022. And as you can see here, we will be looking to get our industrial site application in this fall. That's actually less summer and fall and more just fall at this point. And then, we will be applying for conditional use permits and the wind energy conversion system permits at the local level this summer. And we are still trying to fine-tune the exact dates that we'll be doing that. I will be in touch with, with Mr. Gerch in the near future to, to get that timeline for ourselves, really shoring up. Our goal would probably be end of July, August, maybe early of September for that. And, yeah, as for the environmental consultation that is ongoing, we've been talking to Wyoming Game and Fish and Fish and Wildlife. And so, that's an ongoing process. We, we start that right at the beginning of the conception of the project, and we'll be carrying through studies and communication all the way through the end of the development term. And then realistically through the operations as well. So, the local benefits, this project, we do anticipate to have, to bring plenty of benefits to the community. And as mentioned earlier, this is split between Carbon and Albany County. But we do think we have some, some citing to finalize. We do think about 80% of that will be in Albany County. During construction, we anticipate there'll be about 350 jobs. Anticipate about $190 million in projected state and local tax revenue through the project lifetime. And we are currently doing a socioeconomic impact study through a third party. And we haven't finalized that yet, but these numbers will be a lot more fine tuned by the time that is finished. And that will that will be, that will be finished before or right around when we're applying for the for the local permits. Great, and so that's very big picture, that is the project. I haven't gotten too far into details, mainly because at this point, there is so much of the project that is waiting to be finalized. And we view it as as everything is about 75% of the way there. And as the puzzle pieces fall in, everything starts to get finalized. And we really will be getting a lot more relevant, concrete information throughout the summer. And I wanted to introduce this project now at this point so that you're all aware of it. And I've been able to introduce myself. And as we get more information, I will be able to 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 share that with you and start a conversation so that we're all on the same page and we're all happy with with where the project sits before we even get to the to the application phase. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Marston. Do we have any questions, Mr. Hinckley?
I understand you're you're just wading into this, but of course, everybody knows you're coming in behind the rail tie, which is usually controversial.
Mr. Hinckley? I apologize, I interrupted you, but we we can't even hear you. And I don't think something might be going off your microphone.
Is this any better?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, I get it, I think I figured out where I have to be talking. Yeah, the question was just a very general one of, since rail ties got everybody's attention, Mr. Marston, they're kind of blocking traffic for you, I guess. Are you talking those 600-foot wind towers, the ones that caught everyone's attention, or something more like that we've grown accustomed to at at Foot Creek?
They will be more in the range of the rail tie tower size. And if 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 it helps to have some sort of visual comparison, I know Foot Creek has just been repowering, so they are removing their, I think, 40, 45-ish smaller turbines and replacing them with some larger ones. And those larger ones are now the ones on the southern side, on the highway side, that are much more more visible. Our turbines will be closer to that size. And we we have
Frozen.
If will be, you know, high 500s.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Ms. Hanning, do you have any questions for Mr. Marston?
Thank you, Mr. Marston, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure my notes were right. I, did you say it had the potential for 590 megawatts, the the project in its entirety? And and could you remind me how many turbines you're you're planning?
Yeah, actually, that's a great point, I did, I'll go back to the summary tab, I think I glossed over that without giving any of the the visual cues to what I wrote. Yeah, so our our aim is 590 megawatts. Of that, we're going to be sending 400, so the bulk of the the project will be on that longer generation tie line up to Aeolus. And then 190 is going to go over to Foot Creek. Right now, we anticipate 106 turbines. That might change a little bit, that's, it it won't change a lot, it'll be a few more, a few less, depending on which model we select.
Thanks for clarifying, I I did write it down wrong, I said 160 instead of 106, so thanks for setting me straight. I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning, Mr. Spiegelberg?
Yes, I have. It's been rumored originally that this project would basically cover a good share of the land owned by Wheatland Irrigation up there. And then from time to time, I hear about Foot Creek, which is down and up from the from the Rock Creek area upon the ridges and so forth. And I just want a clarification. There's really not much out there as far as Wheatland Irrigation. I think they lease some of that for grazing and this and that, but it's pretty much a barren land, which to me lends itself to this use. But I I guess I do have a little concern about when I hear Foot Creek come up, because Foot Creek is down in the ranch country there, north of the McFadden area and so forth. I just want a clarification, that's that's just for my own curiosity.
Yeah, so happy to answer that. We are using a lot of Wheatland Irrigation District land, they're one of our largest landowners for this project. And it's, I was actually just up there a few weeks ago and driving around, and we there's, there's, there's not much in the way of residences, which is great. In fact, there are are none in our project boundary, so as of now, if we we don't shift it. So we do view that as a as a benefit to this regional area. It's, it's very rural and a great spot for dual use, both, you know, harvesting the the air and for the irrigation purposes that it's already being used for, as well as, like you mentioned, there are some grazing leases out there. So those are, those are elements that we don't impact by by being on the land. For Foot Creek, we aren't, I I assume you mean for the transmission line, just for us getting up to the substation, Commissioner Spiegelberg?
When mission lines as well as turbines, because I think there's some misunderstanding or maybe there's more clarity needed to just define exactly what's going to go into the Foot Creek area. Now, some of that Foot Creek area, once you get to the up that north rim, it's a barren country too, but it's, it's, there's a lot of sensitive land down in there, there's ranches, there's a lot of vegetation. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a whole different piece of land than the Wheatland Irrigation. And I just wonder if you have had any positive or negative reaction from the ranchers in that area?
Yeah, so actually, we 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 originally, the original Rock Creek project did have more land in that area. But we removed that for a number of reasons. It, some of them being the reasons you mentioned, it's just more of a populated area, there's more going on, there are more environment. So we didn't really want to open that can. And so we shifted the whole project south a little bit, and like you said, we think it's, it's a, it's a good move in the long run, because it does avoid more, more everything, more more residences, more environmental issues. That being said, are, so so we are, we're a good distance away from 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 Foot Creek. We, if you're familiar with so Bosser Reservoir or King Reservoir up up on the ridge over there in the Wheatland Irrigation land or Diamond Reservoir, I believe it's called, we're we're in that area, and we're still about two or so miles as the crow flies away from from McFadden and that and that Foot Creek area. Our transmission line will go through that. We again, as I mentioned, we're going to try to cite that as responsibly as possible. We are going to, there is an existing transmission line that goes through there that we are targeting to to join that right of way, so we we won't be making any serious or new or new impacts along that route. I hope that answers your question.
Your clarification, that helps me. I don't know if you caught all that, John said, thank you for your clarification. I don't find muted in time for him to say that, but, Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions for Mr. Marston?
What other permitting is required beyond our conditional use permit and the Industrial Siding Commission, for example? Do those transmission lines have to be permitted by FERC? Or is that merely a gathering line that doesn't require that?
Yeah, so that is not, we don't have to go through FERC, it's all staying in Wyoming. And so we're not, we're not, we're not crossing any any borders, any state borders, so we won't have to do that. For the transmission permitting, we do have to permit that at the industrial siding level, so we'll actually do that. The plan as of now is to do the transmission permitting next year, once we have more a better idea of where the land control is going to be, where our our exact route will be. And so we'll, we need to do a little bit more research on the the details of that. And then we'll commence a number of studies, environmental, cultural studies along the transmission routes as well, before we are ready to apply for the ISC permit for that. We also will, so Carbon County has permitting requirements for transmission. So I'll be also applying for Carbon County transmission permits for both sections of those as well, because they both go into Carbon County.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marston, and I believe I have any questions at this point, but I sure appreciate you being here and giving a background on your project.
I believe Mr. Gerch has a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Gerch.
Yeah, so Chase, and you may have, may have said this, I don't know, I was trying to make sure I had the right slide up when you're going through it, so. Is any of this on public land, state or federal, or is this all private land? I mean, outside of the transmission, I don't really care, but like the project itself, is any of that on public land?
Yeah, there is some state land, we've completely avoided the BLM land. We are, as of now, again, our turbine layout might fluctuate, but we have between six and eight turbines that we will be citing on state land within the project boundary. And we are working with Office to State Land Investment Office right now to to secure that wind lease from them.
Okay, and I would just note that when you turn in your application, you know, you can have that on all your plans and everything, but you don't have to pay for those turbines. We don't regulate on state land, so just a heads up on that, so while we're talking here.
Thank you, I'll make note.
Whose side are you on anyway, dude?
All right, well, Mr. Marston, it sounds like everybody has their answers. Their questions answered, so we sure appreciate you coming, and I look forward to seeing you here in the future, and good luck with your project.
Yeah, thank you all, I look forward to chatting with you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, sir. Moving forward in our meeting here, looks like we're going to move on to other items and announcements, and this is one thing that we changed on our agenda here today. The special meeting for training, and I believe that Ms. Curran will kind of give us a background. And part of that background was Mr. Hinckley had sent out an email to me this week about a few things, and I did have discussion with Ms. Curran about it. And I think that that's the purpose of the special meeting. But Ms. Curran, if you could kind of enlighten us on the special meeting, and then what we'll need to do to schedule that time for the training and for those topics that Mr. Hinckley had brought up in his email to me, so, Ms. Curran?
Thanks, Chairman Moore. So as we talked about a little bit, there's a general board training that our office likes to do when we have new board members, and it's an introduction for those new board members and a refresher for existing board members. So we'd like to do that in the work session, we'd like to discuss the legislative changes that resulted out of this most recent legislative session, one when I went into effect, I think April 1st, the rest going to affect June for, or July 1st, I'm sorry. And then, as you mentioned, the email from Mr. Hinckley about some language concerns he has about how things are presented. And we want to make sure that what we are saying and what's coming out of your meetings aligns with what you want it to be and meets the statutory requirements for certifying the recommendation to the commissioners. And then also, if there are any suggested changes to the zoning resolution, if we want to talk about those, so we can get a start on what needs to be changed or what we think should be looked at and potentially readdressed. That's what I'd like to cover in this work session slash training that's upcoming. And just by way of my schedule, if we could do it July 7th through the date of our meeting on the 14th, if there's a day in there that works for everybody, that would be helpful for me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Curran, appreciate that. Mission Phil about that. Mr. Spiegelberg?
Well, I had a little trouble understanding things because of the volume is kind of in and out. But what, what was Mr. Hinckley's main concern? Being the impetus to get this special meeting going? I just, I just couldn't hear a lot of what was going on.
Sure, sure. I think that, and I don't mean to step on your toes, Mr. Hinckley, but I think the the point of it is, is in the email that you had sent to David and shared with myself was that just the way that we approve public applications and the words of saying findings, effect, conclusions of law, and, you know, kind of just straightening that out just a little bit, or when we have an application, what facts? What facts are there, what laws do we have? Because we get, when we get applications like we did last month, where, you know, we have a three to two splitter, or we send that on to the Board of County Commissioners, and whether we approve it or deny it, what are those reasons and and what facts and the conclusions of laws, and which which laws? I think, and Mr. Hinckley, is that kind of correct of what you're kind of wondering and and raise the question of? Because you've kind of mentioned it before in other meetings.
Yeah, now, can you hear me better now, I think I've sorted out my mics.
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you real good now, all right?
Yeah, there are too many different pieces, too many buttons, it's like my remote for the television. So yeah, to speak to Commissioner Spiegelberg's issues, much of this has come out of our meetings and out of the county commission meetings here just over the last several months. So the two things specifically that I mentioned were, one, the issue of of findings of fact. And Commissioner Richardson brought this up at the last county commission meeting. And I think he kind of had it a little inside out, but it's, well, like I said, that Vista Beam thing we just saw. The invitation to us is to approve it based on the findings of fact and the staff report, which was then consistent, of course, with the staff recommendation. So in the little script that Joe put together for us, one of the options was move to deny based on finding facts and and staff report. Well, that version of the motion wouldn't make a lot of sense if the staff report was headed in the other direction. So it actually came up from Commissioner Kennedy when we had a tie vote back in February, whatever it was. And and so we defeated a motion to approve. You may remember Commissioner Kennedy, then you made a motion to table, and I was kind of scratching my head over what's appropriate, but I concluded afterwards that Commissioner Kennedy was correct. Defeat of a motion to approve just is just that full stop, that isn't the same as a motion to deny. And this was the point that that Commissioner Richardson brought up. So maybe it's a kind of a fine point, but I I was concerned, as was Commissioner Richardson, that we move forward from these decisions with a a well bounded motion that is in fact grounded in articulated findings of fact and conclusions of law. So that was something that I thought Jennifer could give us some guidance on responding, again, to my question, and I think something that just comes up periodically and the discussions at that county commission. The other thing, similarly, was was keyed off some work that Commissioner Kennedy suggested Jennifer provide for us with respect to the relationship between comprehensive plans and regulations. And this came up in the county commission's discussion of the Rogers Canyon, where, cut me off, Chairman Moore, we're going to have this at the work session, but I guess just quickly try to explore that one other issue that I had had been. Where uh, cut cut me off, Chairman Moore, we're going to have this at the work session, but I guess just quickly try to explore that one other issue that I had had been tussling with. We have in our zoning regulations, a required finding that the application be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So in a sense, we have brought the comprehensive plan into regulation, which was the contentious point of of say, that case over in Laramie County. Attorney Curran had had suggested that that was potentially problematic because sort of is the comprehensive plan in or is it mine? And and I thought that we could use some guidance on that. And I think I can also suggest, the commissioners could use some guidance on that, which I think they've requested. So those were the two things that that had just come up in in various venues here in the last three or four months that I thought we could use some guidance on. Um, and then before I yield the floor, just one other thought, if we're going to do this as a work session, which I think is a great idea, and we should have a for us newbies, particularly, the rest of you guys, it it may be superfluous too, and you can go go fishing, but I think we could benefit from just that general introduction. And and I would hope that we could invite all of us to to think between now and this session of other things that we might want to explore. So it is a just a wide open, what are we trying to do here at planning and zoning? And how can we do our jobs most most correctly? Is one version of the question. So yeah, that perhaps rambling discussion, uh, thank you for your indulgence, Chairman Moore, but that was what had precipitated my email and and suggestion that we move forward with some sort of a work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Go ahead, Ms. Curran.
Sorry, Chairman Moore. I also just wanted to clarify that the suggestion of the work session or and the training was mine. I had talked with David for the last couple of months about putting together a training. And then with the email from Mr. Hinckley and all of these other things, it seemed to make most sense. So that suggestion to do this, not at a regular meeting, but in a training was mine. So it's me who's trying to take up your additional time, not Ms. Hinckley.
I appreciate your offer.
Well, thank you, Ms. Curran. Uh, Phil, um, I think I'll go ahead and just make this decision. What we'll do uh for the special training meeting, um, I'll coordinate with Mr. Gurch and Ms. uh Curran, and then I'll reach out to each individual member of the planning commission. And we'll narrow down a date. It'll be some date between the seventh and the fourteenth of July. Does that sound acceptable to everybody? Mr. Spiegelberg?
Well, I'm like I think in a way this is this is like splitting hairs. You know?
Sure.
The findings of fact. I put a lot of faith in our county planner and his assistant. They do a lot of research. They do a lot of presentation. And it comes down to where they they make the initial call to approve or dis- disapprove. And you can go on about procedure. You can go about this, that. I think that right now you're just going to muddy the waters more. I think our our planning, our planner and his assistant do a fantastic job of getting these packets out. Now, I don't frankly see the need for this. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, and that's fine. And and I appreciate that. Um, and I think uh more so than even that though, too, I think it'd be good, in this current, you can probably um attest this too. But also going over um uh, one thing would be the uh asphalt specialties versus the um Laramie County Planning and Zoning Commission. And uh where are uh the authority? And I and I get what you're saying, and I agree too. I think Mr. Gurch does a phenomenal job. But um, but also going and kind of updating us on that. So uh, are 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 you opposed to having a meeting or a training?
I'm opposed to having a meeting. I don't see the need for a meeting. I think everything right now, you do an excellent job as a chairman. I've been on this for nine years, and all of a sudden we got these problems. I don't see the problems. I think I think that uh, there's there's a lot of things I could bring up and waste my time about it. But I just think that it's a, it's just redundant to go over this stuff and uh findings of fact, there's that. I mean, you can, it can go on and on and on. And I and I just think frankly, it's a waste of our time and the attorney's time. That's my personal opinion, but I still have great faith. I've worked with Dave for almost nine years. There's not once that he didn't get back with me with an answer or be most willing to to answer a question that no matter how long it took to research it. And I don't, I'm not sitting down on his office. Maybe I'll have to call him by phone maybe once every three or four meetings and ask a simple question, and he's got the answer. I I just think, and you know, this is all volunteer on our part too. And I just, special meetings for this, special meetings for that. And I frankly, I think it's a waste of our that's my, that's my feeling. And and another thing, uh, this goes back to when we adjourned meetings in the past. And then letters come out after we adjourn. I don't go along with that. That's wrong.
All right, thank you, John. Mr. Kennedy, do you have a uh comment?
My only question is when you, Mr. Chairman, contact us about this meeting. Ms. Curran, how much time are you anticipating that this meeting would last? Just so we have some idea of timing and how it fits into the rest of our schedules.
Chairman Moore?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Curran.
Um, to answer Mr. Kennedy's question, I I think we can get the bulk of it done in two to two and a half hours at the most with the training in there with the review of the current legislation and how that impacts our zoning regulations. And also um, Mr. Gurch had mentioned there were a couple of things that he was aware of in the zoning resolution that needs to be addressed or potentially addressed, and then also address the few things that Mr. Hinckley has brought up. And then also to address Mr. Spiegelberg's point, from my perspective, this is certainly my intention, and this is certainly not to undermine anything David has done or to cast any aspersions. I think David and Joe do a phenomenal job. This is more from my point as the legal standpoint to do do the training for the new board members, so we have that done. And then to make sure that with the legislative changes, our resolutions and things are where they need to be. So I just wanted that to be clarified as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Curran. Uh, Ms. Hanning?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I I guess I I welcome the training. I I especially welcome hearing about the leg- legislative changes and and how we need to uh be responsive to them so that we stay uh within the new statutes. Um, whether that gets accomplished at the next regular meeting, you know, I don't know what other things are coming down the pike and whether it's a light meeting like tonight, um, I'm open to doing it as a special meeting or or in the next scheduled meeting, but I I definitely welcome the training. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Um, and I guess my feeling on it is is uh um, as long as we can um figure out a date and time that works for all of us, I think it'd be just fine. And so I'll reach out to everybody individually and uh we'll uh uh figure out a Mr. Hinckley?
Yeah, just to quickly respond, and and some of this we would go through at the meeting to to Commissioner Spiegelberg's concerns. One, I I really liked the suggestion that uh Ms. Curran brought forward. This is a a work session, and if if we want to call it just for us newbies, that's fine with me. So uh, nobody should consider this to be compulsory in any way. Um, and and it may be a function of of my ignorance. I'm perfectly happy to 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 take that that conclusion. Uh, but I would like to to hear where we are and what's new. And and as I say, much of this is coming from the county commission. And if those who are listening to those meetings, which I do sometimes and not always, uh, would know what I'm talking about. And and then I I picking up on what Commissioner Spiegelberg said, I I in no way mean this to be a criticism of our staff. I I don't have any question that David and Joe are doing a good job and working hard. I would hope that the suggestion that we can look to the future and and think about how we can do our jobs better does not necessarily mean that that anybody's doing their job poorly. So I I hope we can proceed in the spirit of let's do the best we can. Uh, and that does not necessarily mean that anything's wrong, but as I say, perfection is an elusive goal that we should keep in mind, at least to the extent we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Um, so if that's um, so we'll go with that uh thought for the um, for that meeting, and I'll be in contact with Mr. Gurch and and Ms. Curran. Um, the other item and announcement is the next meeting, next meeting scheduled for July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at four P M. And I think at this time, probably we'll just keep it on Zoom, but I will uh also inform, I'll be in contact with Mr. Gurch. And if that should change, we will uh um uh let everybody know. So um, with that being said, do we have any other citizen comments that are topics? And not seeing anybody else that's a participant on our on our meeting here. It doesn't look like there is. So uh, I guess I'm looking for an adjournment of our regular meeting. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call roll Mr. Hinckley. Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, aye. So meeting's been adjourned. Um, and uh I'll be reaching out to all the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission here and uh through either David or or Jennifer and and we'll touch base about the uh special meeting that uh Ms. Curran had uh planned on doing for us. And other than that, I'll see you guys next month. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.